Monday, Monday is that's the mama and the papas, right? Was that their song?
I think back in the eighties, the Bengals had a song called Manic Monday.
Absolutely.
Written by Prince.
It was, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Francine, Javon, thanks for joining us. We'll do introductions when we get to that point in the agenda. Thanks for being here, though.
Thank you, President Cook.
I think we are waiting for.
We're waiting for Monique, Bill, and Jeff, but we do have a quorum.
All right, let's just give it one more mo- we're not yet five yet according to my clock, so we'll just wait a little bit.
Could be traffic.
Everyone.
Hey, Monique.
Monique.
Hi there.
All right, everyone, it's 5:01. I'm going to call to order the Springfield Technical Community College Board of Trustees Meeting, regular meeting for Monday, May 23, 2022. Nanette, would you please call the role?
Yes, Mary Kate Muren.
Present.
Janay McDonald.
Present.
Elizabeth Posito.
Present.
Monique Seldon Riley.
Present.
Maurice Lindsey.
Present.
Samalid Hogan.
Present.
Bill Johnson.
Here.
Norm Roldan.
Present.
Jeff Sattler. And Max Starks.
Great. Happy Monday, everyone. Do I hear a motion to accept the trustee meeting minutes of April 25, 2022?
Madam Chair, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Nanette, would you please call the role to accept the trustee minute, minute meetings for April 25, 2022?
Yes, Mary Kate Muren.
Yes.
Janay McDonald.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito.
Yes.
Monique Seldon Riley.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsey.
Yes.
Samalid Hogan.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Norm Roldan.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler. And Max Starks.
Great. Thank you so much. So trustee Starks, we had our Committee on Ways and Means for on May 9, 2022. Ask you to do a little bit of an update. We have some great news coming out of your committee that we'll be discussing and voting on.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. So we started our Ways and Means Committee with an update on the Investment Security Report led by Chair Muren, followed by an overview of the fiscal year 2022 third quarter trust fund report. That led us into a financial update and outlook, starting with the cash flow projection. We projected year-end cash balance at 7.1 million, which is approximately 2 million higher than reported last month, due primarily to an increase in the state appropriation and the timing and source of outflows related to facilities projects. We then discussed the fiscal year 2022 revenue and spending prediction through April. The projected net surplus at year end is $2,081,349, primarily from a combination of an increase in the state appropriation due to formula funding along with projected underspending in full and part-time salaries, workers comp, and overtime. That led us into the much anticipated final fiscal year 2023 budget discussion. The final budget now includes a minus 6% enrollment assumption versus the minus 3% assumed in previous drafts, in addition to a freeze of student fees for the second consecutive year. The, the budget for fiscal year 23, 2023 is balanced, including the use of reserves of $4 million, the recognition of Massachusetts ARPA funding of $500,000, a reduction of 15 full-time positions and associated salary expense through attrition in retirements, operational expense reduction of $500,000, and sustained investment in facilities and IT capital projects. We then reviewed and unanimously, unanimously approved two motions for full board consideration. One on fiscal year 2023 student fees, the other on fiscal year 2023 budget. We then adjourned the meeting.
Great. Thank you so much, trustee Starks. Do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the Committee on Ways and Means for May 9, 2022?
So moved. Betty?
Second, Madam Chair.
Discussion. Hearing none. Nanette, would you please call the role to accept the Committee on Ways and Means, May 9, 2022, meeting minutes?
Mary Kate Muren.
Yes.
Janay McDonald.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito.
Yes.
Monique Seldon Riley.
Present.
Maurice Lindsey.
Yes.
Samalid Hogan.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Norm Roldan.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Max Starks.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. As trustee Starks did mention, we have two motions coming out of Committee on Ways and Means on page 12. Is motion 2022-12. Would someone like to read it, please?
Madam Chair, Bill Johnson.
Wonderful.
I move that the Springfield Technical Community College Board of Trustees pursuant to the provision of Chapter 15A, Section 22, authorize the president of the college and/or his designee, designees to freeze college fees for FY 2023 and remain at the same level of FY 22 in recognition of the economic hardship faced by our students due, due to the pandemic.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Jeff Sattler.
Discussion. Hearing none. Nanette, would you please call the role to accept the motion of 2022-12 on FY 2023 student fees?
Yes, Mary Kate Muren.
Yes.
Janay McDonald.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito.
Yes.
Monique Seldon Riley.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsey.
Yes.
Samalid Hogan.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Norm Roldan.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Max Starks.
Yes.
Thanks again.
Great. Thank you. Our second motion, which is on page 15, came out of the Committee on Ways and Means, FY 2023 budget. Motion 2022-13. Would someone like to read that motion, please?
Madam Chairman, this is Samalid Hogan. I'll read the motion. Here, the motion reads that the Springfield Technical Community College Board of Trustees pursuant to the provisions of Section 22, Chapter 15A, approves the FY 2023 college spending plan and FY 2023 trust fund budget, and further authorizes the president of the college and/or his designees to take any and all student steps necessary to award contracts for capital projects.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Nanette, would you please take the vote for, in the role for a motion, 2022-13 FY 2023 budget?
Yes, Mary Kate Muren.
Yes.
Janay McDonald.
Yes.
Elizabeth Posito.
Yes.
Monique Seldon Riley.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsey.
Yes.
Samalid Hogan.
Yes.
Bill Johnson.
Yes.
Norm Roldan.
Yes.
Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
And Max Starks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Before I turn it over to you, Dr. Cook, I just want to take the, a moment to Mac to thank you and your committee for all of the hard work. Andrea, you and your team and the administration, I know it is a very long process. Really appreciate all the hard work and all the contributions that you have brought forth for our next budget. Really excited to see that the student fees are once again not being raised. Always keeping the students front of mind in everything we do. So I didn't want the, the meeting to, to go without, again, publicly thanking you for all the hard work and everyone that was part of that. So thank you again so much. Much appreciated. Dr. Cook, we're going to go right into your perspective.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, trustees. I was going to start in the same place. Again, thank you, trustees. You just worked through a series of motions that are significant, impactful, and will clearly carry us in the year forward. So I thank you for that, and I thank you for doing all this diligence here in May. At times, right, we have needed the month of June to work through that. But again, I, I too can echo the sentiment. Our administration finance team, really our, our college leadership team has done draft after draft, hand in glove with Ways and Means. Thank you, trustee Starks as well. Ways and Means really has worked so closely with us this year to build out a budget. Yes, freezing fees is what seems like a pretty rare position in higher education and particularly in Massachusetts. So we have every right to be proud of that. But it's also, again, with input, a budget that still invests in things while also being mindful that enrollment may slide on us. I'll talk a little bit more about what the outlook is on that. So what a great footing to land in at this time of year as we try to celebrate the conclusion of, of the academic year. So thank you. A few different things, and, and I would say for the, for the, for the broader board, that's not always a means. We did put in the packet the full slide deck around the budget with that detail, including projections for, for the next few years, quite frankly, and how we utilize reserves. So I invite you to take a look at that. And again, a great model for us, a great map for us for years to come. Looking ahead, it is, it is commencement season. I've seen many of you trustees in person. How nice, what a lovely change. It's wonderful to celebrate so many of those school health programs that we have that are incredibly valuable. And the ceremonies, when you can see the families now in person again, it, it just, it, it does remind us the in-personness is that tough to replicate. So looking forward to that. Next week, we have nursing pinning, we have honors convocation, and then commencement on June 2. You'll have the details from Nanette. We invite you to land about 5:00, 5:30 at the Mass Mutual Center. Ceremony starts at 6:30. So really looking forward to celebrating, which will be a tremendously joyous, I think, occasion because it's in person. And I had to remind myself for the first time in three years, it really has been since 2019. I kind of had to pinch myself that it's taken that long for us to get back. So looking forward to that. A few other notes. Summer operations and the outlook. So it's early days, as we've shared in the past, we really get 50%, 50, 5-0% of our enrollment after July 1. So it is very early days, and we'll even get sometimes 12, 13, 14%, two weeks before the start of the semester. And so there is a lot of enrollment ahead of us. But as of right now, things are encouraging. We are up about 200 new students from this time last year. And again, 200 is a, is a pretty big number at this time of year. We are down overall in credits. So again, many, many, many of our students go part-time. So how we bundle them together, the credits really do matter. We're down only, and I say that only about 1.3% from this time last year. So certainly well within our enrollment projection. Again, it's very early. We'll see how things materialize, but we're on a, we're on a good, we're on a good path to a fall semester. We'll also see where do students choose? As I have given the example in many forums, when you have introduction to psychology and you have a morning class, an afternoon class, an evening class, and an online class, and probably with some hybrid variations in there, what will students choose, given that type of choice at STCC? We'll see. We'll see where that, where that lands. And again, some, summer, particularly for your administrative team, your administration leaders, is a time for us to continue to already look ahead, planning, planning. Obviously, COVID cases have elevated, so we're very mindful of that. We have switched to a mask encouraged, masked, not required stance on campus that'll hold for graduation as well. We'll see what does the summer look like. Obviously, there is just a lot of information and availability of vaccination around us. We do have that requirement in place for students on campus and all of our employees. That's a very helpful protective net, if you will, as we really, really do try to push for that in-person dynamic with fall semester. Again, at, at the conclusion, happy to take questions and, and hear from, from you trustees. Building 20 in progress. So DCAM, again, the state agency, the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, DCAM, has already hit the ground. One of their senior leaders and our project manager assigned to us for our facilities project came out to campus last Friday. Our core leadership team met with them. We are already, again, off and running with the planning. We hope to have an architect in place by the end of the summer. Again, DCAM is what's called the OPM, the Owner's Project Manager. They, because of the size and the cost of the project, manage this on behalf of the institution. But they do want to work hand in glove with us as the institution to make sure that we land all the way through with these key things, an architect, and then the architect helps scope that for the construction firm, and then serves as the project manager all the way through. So again, DCAM is really helping us move this along. Obviously, we are still multiple years to completion, but we will keep you appraised of where we are with all that, but very, very encouraged with our work with, with, with DCAM already. Finally, and certainly not, not last but not least here on the agenda tonight, wanted to just give a little bit of time and a little bit of room for a conversation, introduction, at the very least, around strategic planning. We have launched our strategic planning task force. We are in the very capable hands, and our two co-chairs are here tonight. Dr. Shay Butler, Vice President of Advancement and External Affairs, and Professor Eileen Cusick are with us. Let me turn it over to Shay and Eileen to introduce the leadership team from our consultant, Campus Works, who we have been thrilled with, who has already been making the rounds, helping build the communication structure that will carry us for the next year. Wonderfully received, Dr. Cooley and Javon Brown at the All College Town Hall that we had recently. Again, everyone, trustee Betty Alex X. Posito is serving as the trustee liaison to this work. Again, let me turn it over to Dr. Shay and Eileen for some further comments and introductions on, on where the road ahead looks.
Thank you, Dr. Cook and Chair Muren, and greetings to the entire board, and special thanks to trustee Posito for, for being there with us as part of our process. So today is really just an opportunity to briefly introduce the, some of the leadership team with you as it relates to our strategic planning initiative. As Dr. Cook has stated, we really hit the ground running. So I want to just give a moment. I know this is your first time connecting with our co-chair, Eileen Cusick, who adds so much value with her depth of knowledge about the college and her experience with strategic planning to this process. And then, of course, following Eileen's brief introduction, I'd like you to hear from our campus partners, Dr. Chrissy Cooley and Javon Brain, who have locked arms with us as part of this process and brought to board their industry expertise and all of the resources of Campus Works. So without further ado.
Thanks, Shay. Hi, everyone. I'm Eileen Cusick, and I have start, I started at STCC in July of 1992, eight, working 80% time, and I went full-time in 1988, for the most part in IT and in different positions, various positions in IT. I went to full-time faculty in 2014. Absolutely love working with the students, and I'm very excited to be working with the strategic plan, with the task force, working with Shay and with Dan Sardica. I'll mention him in just a second, what that role is. I have worked with strategic planning at STCC, not the most recent one, but the one in the early 2000s. So I have a little bit of work dealing with the strategic plan. And not, I don't believe with us tonight, but I do want to mention is that per recommendation from Campus Works, we've identified Dan Sardica, who is the webmaster here at STCC. He's going to be taking on the communications lead role for us to make certain that we get our messages out there. And I guess I'm going to hand it off now to Chrissy, who I know is on the call.
Hi, Eileen. Thank you so very much. Shay, thank you. President Cook, thank you. Chair Muren and trustees and others. It's such a pleasure to be with you all this afternoon. Thank you for inviting Javon and I to spend just a, a few minutes on today's agenda to introduce ourselves and, and provide just a very high overview of the work that has been done to date. And there will be more to come. We'll go into more detail at the June 27 board meeting where we will share, you know, more detail around the Campus Works strategic planning methodology and also the STCC strategic planning engagement and that process. But for right now, I, I want to, first of all, just offer greetings on behalf of Campus Works and Liz Murphy, who is our CEO. We are all so very thrilled to be Springfield Technical Community College's strategic planning partner as you plan out your five-year strategic plan. For those of you who are not familiar with Campus Works, we have been around a little over 20 years. Campus Works is exclusively dedicated to higher education, and we work with hundreds of colleges and universities around the nation and, and really North America as we partner in transforming higher education so that students, faculty, and staff thrive. And, and that's really what I was hearing earlier as, as we were thinking about, as you all were voting on the student fees and, and sharing other exciting announcements, is how do we support an environment in which our students truly thrive? And that is our passion at Campus Works, and we are very excited to have the opportunity to partner with an institution that also has that as a passion of its own. So our goal is to partner with you in ensuring an inclusive, engaging, and data-informed process as Shay and Eileen and the Strategic Planning Task Force work together in developing insightful strategic goals and objectives that will impact the institution and the community and also enhance the student experience. And so just some brief introductions from Javon and myself. Again, my name is Chrissy Cooley. I am Portfolio Executive Leader with Campus Works. I've been with Campus Works a little over two years, but in higher education for about 30. About 15 of those years on college and university campuses and a variety of student affairs and academic affairs roles. So prior to joining Campus Works a couple of years ago, I served as Vice President for Student Engagement and Success at Barton College in North Carolina, and then previous to that had served as Assistant Vice Provost for Student Success Initiatives at the University of South Carolina. I've also spent about another 13 years consulting with colleges and universities around strategic planning initiatives. And so with many community colleges, as well as four-year colleges and universities, certainly in thinking about our future and where we are headed, the direction and an exciting and aspirational future for the institution and helping to chart a course to, to achieve that. I'm really thrilled about having the opportunity to work very closely with President Cook, with Shay, Eileen, the entire Strategic Planning Task Force, and the campus and the community as a whole as a part of this. At this time, I'd love to pass it to my colleague, Javon Brain, who will share a bit about his background. Javon?
Hello all. So wonderful to meet you and be here with you today. I'm so excited and thrilled to be working with this excellent institution. My name is Javon Brain, and I have, I serve as a Senior Optimization Executive with Campus Works, and I recently joined the organization. Most recently, I've worked in the Carro Community College system for about the last 10 years in various progressive roles in the student affairs area. I've served as a trio director, an advising director, dean of students, and most recently as Associate Vice President of Student Affairs. The work that has been happening has already been spectacular, and I'm just so excited to see where we go from here and how we can continue to make the student and staff experience at STCC just amazing. Thank you.
Javon, thank you. And so real briefly, I did want to offer up just a couple of, of, of highlights of the work that has been done to date. And as Javon shared, we are very excited about it. I've had the opportunity to work with many colleges and universities as a part of their strategic planning initiatives. And truly, I will say this, that, that Shay, Eileen, and the Strategic Planning Task Force have just done phenomenal work so far and, you know, in planning out an engaging and inclusive, transparent, and a data-informed process to, to develop strategic goals and objectives that then would be proposed to President Cook and then to the board for approval. And so we have really hit the ground running this past month. We had the All-Employee Town Hall, April 22, along with a kickoff with a Strategic Planning Task Force. We've also had our kickoff with the Cabinet, also in late April. Our first meeting with the Strategic Planning Task Force was just a couple of Fridays ago, May 13. And as was mentioned earlier, we're really thrilled. You all have done a wonderful job in compiling a group of representative faculty, staff, students, alumni, community members to be a part of this task force. There are about 30 people who are part of it, also with two liaisons, Chair Posito. It's wonderful to have the chance to work with you, trustee Posito, and then also liaison from the Massachusetts Department of Higher Education. And so again, a very well-thought-out, well-organized group of Strategic Planning Task Force members. I can attest that they are very, very engaged and passionate. Our working session was incredibly productive and very engaging and very insightful. And so we are just really very optimistic and confident and excited about this process, working with that group. They're going to be meeting approximately twice a month as a part of working sessions and other workshops, and they will also be breaking into five subgroups to conduct some deeper dive research over the summer and the fall related to a variety of areas, including constituents and stakeholders, resources, processes, partnerships, and innovation and equity. The fall activities, and, and this is, we'll share more details about the timeline with you at the June 27 meeting. But did just want to let you know that in August, with the start of the fall semester, we'll be kicking off several signature events, including the Trends in Higher Education Workshop, our Student Experience Workshop, and also our Future Summit. We'll also be working with you all and engaging in conversations around mission and vision, and also engaging with stakeholders through surveys and focus groups. So we look forward to having the opportunity, not only to present a bit further with you on June 27, but also to hear from you as members of the Board of Trustees, what is most important to you, what your priorities are as a part of this process. And thank you very, very much for your time today.
Thank you, Chrissy. Thank you, Javon. Trustees, if that leaves you feeling like it is comprehensive, it is intended to be that way. This is a thorough group that we have assembled with, again, very talented consultants facilitating. I know we have had conversations around this sort of external and outside-in look. I have every confidence that we will get that from Campus Works. You know, there are some very provocative considerations out there for higher education, particularly public higher education. For a college such as ours that talks a lot about facilities and campus infrastructure, the idea of 10 years from now, what will a college campus even look like? Lots of food for thought for us to sort of gauge, think through, and otherwise strategically planned for. So again, as mentioned, we will really have a chance to crack this open for you to hear more detail and for a, a real thorough Q and A at the June board meeting. We'll really, we'll dedicate some time there. So thank you, Chrissy and Javon, for your time tonight. Happy trustees and Madam Chair to hear questions in general about college operations where we are heading into the summer. Happy to hear thoughts or questions.
Madam Chair, this is Bill Johnson. I got one question from last week's, not last week's, but last meeting's agenda. I apologize for not being there. I don't know if you want to do it now or wait till old business.
Up, up to you. Up to you, Bill. Whatever's good for you.
Well, the dovetails into, into, I see that the, the license renewal is approved for the radio station. And I got a question. I'm, I'm looking at the revenues. Where does, well, let me back, backtrack. Does the radio station bring in any revenues? And if so, where is that on the revenue? What, where does it get lumped into?
Sure. And, and we have our CFO here who can disabuse me if I wander too far, everyone. So WTCC, as much as it is, certainly the community's radio station, is a component part, if you will, of the college. So think of it as a department, less so its own standalone separate entity. They do fundraise, and they do work to underwrite their operations. But ultimately, those are sort of folded into the broader college budget. I don't think you would find
Okay.
in the working budget, trustee Johnson, that we show trustees what the line is for the radio station. I'm guessing our CFO would say there is an operating line there for WTCC.
Okay, so you guys don't sell ads then, so. Okay, so you guys don't sell ads then. So like, if there's somebody, it's a sponsorship. It's not like a conventional radio station where you pay for a spot. It's more of, is it spot? I'm just trying to figure out how the, you know, recognition is if somebody puts money in.
Yeah. And from an operating standpoint, there are no paid employees either, right? So there is no expense offset in that sense of personnel. But Andrew, do you happen to know, or Shay, do you happen to know about that question of sponsorship as opposed to fundraising?
Yes, we do. The majority of the funds raised are through our radio fund. So there's an annual radio fund that brings in most of the funds, and then there are some small sponsorships also as well that come into the radio station.
All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions for Dr. Cook and to speak into his perspective? Hearing none. Dr. Cooley, I'm really excited for this really important work that is going to, that you've already taken. And Betty, of course, will keep us in line too, from a trustee perspective. So really, thank you for the update and really looking forward to the timeline of next month is seeing where we are, what we can do from a board to provide additional support. So please reach out with anything you need, Dr. Cooley.
Thank you so very much, Chair Muren. It was such a pleasure spending time with you all this afternoon. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to seeing you again in just a month. Take care, everyone.
Great. And in the future, it's Mary Kate. Okay? So we'll all be on the same page with that.
And it's also Chrissy.
Okay, great.
Take care. Good night.
Good night. Have a great, great week. Any, any old business? So new business. So just wanted to a little bit talk through the annual presidential evaluation process. So the executive committee, we met on May 18th to have a conversation about the end of the year for Dr. Cook. And as you all recall, last year, we engaged ACCT for our five-year annual evaluation that's required by the DHE. So this year, we're going to be gauging the trustees in a similar process that we've done in years past. And you should have already, probably right between, before this meeting, received an email once again from Nanette. This template will look very similar to everybody, except our new trustee. So apologies for the comment. But we're really going to ask you to think about the last school year and provide the feedback in the four major buckets that we've done in the past. It'll be COVID leadership, fiscal oversight, engagement, and that will be with the college and community and strategic planning. Of course, we have an other bucket. So those of you who had a huge participation, maybe accreditation, you know, Jeff, you were leading the charge with facilities, so maybe that falls. So if you could provide that information with that template and send it back to my attention no later than June 6th, I'll send out gentle reminders, and so will Nanette about that. And then what we would like to do a little bit different this year, based on some feedback from the executive committee, is that we're going to have guided conversations. So Betty, myself, and Janay, we're going to be scheduling about 45 to 60 minutes with every trustee and kind of leading and talking through your feedback and asking some questions so we can have some guided conversation. All of that feedback then will be compiled, sent to the executive committee for review, and then sent the week before our June 27th meeting. So you have plenty of time to review, have additional feedback in your mind for us to discuss and to approve that moving forward. So just wanted to pause right there to see if I went a little bit too quickly or if you had any questions or comments about that process for this year.
Madam Chair, I looked it over and I'm glad in the way we're doing it, and it looks pretty clear and straightforward. Thanks for the great work that you guys are doing.
Thanks, Norman. I think, you know, we had aligned as a board, right? That it was really important for us, maybe every other year, engaging. So this will be our off year since we just did that comprehensive one last year. So appreciate the feedback and the hard work of Betty and Janay too.
Small prompt, everyone. You'll see that I did include in this packet, we did include in this packet the self-assessment that I pulled together. So you'll see sort of comprehensive outlook using a timetable this year on a number of accomplishments that serve the college's mission and strategic goals. So I was happy to provide that to you in advance.
Great. Thank you. So I think this really kind of, the new business goes right into my chair's report that talked a little bit about the timeline. Happy to send an email. I might ask Nanette to do that. We'll put that together, send it out to you. We'll be sending you gentle reminders. You've got a little bit of time. Get dummy for Memorial Day weekend. Makes my life a little bit and the committee's life a little bit. Really appreciate that. And then Nanette will be reaching out to schedule based on your availability and convenience to have those kind of guided conversations. And then we'll spend Monday, June 27th, talking through that. So really looking forward to that. Another exciting piece of news, and you know, Dr. Cook helped me with this one too, is Dr. Marti has really done incredible, incredible work on our governance project and the model, as you recall, through NETI. That was the one thing that was a great opportunity for the college to ensure that we have a comprehensive and inclusive governance process and model. And I'm going to put you on the spot, Janay, if it's okay. And just to kind of talk through that a little bit, and my apologies for putting you on the spot. But it's my understanding that Dr. Marti has put that or is going to put it through the college environment for additional feedback. And you can check me on that, Dr. Cook, too, if I spoke out of turn.
Thank you. Certainly put me on the spot. But I like to say that I think that based on the outcome of the report, that we have come to a very lovely, happy medium where that there will not be any silencing of voices. There is room for amplification of voices in other areas in the past where we lacked a little bit. And one of the ways I'm really excited about is on the inclusion or expansion of inclusion of student, the student body and the student government. I think we'll also be very happy to receive or have a new structure for how we go about the communications between the shared governance body and to my committee. So we have some added guidance there. And also how, you know, they'll give a nod to Dr. Cook and his cabinet on how we communicate. So it has been a long, tough road. Thank you. I also want to thank trustee Lindsay for bearing a lot of that with me and providing some very useful insight. But it's a great model where there'll be representation from several different groups on the campus, from, you know, union to AUC, to the president's cabinet. And I think it's really reflective of what shared governance is supposed to be about, while also continuing to respect the fiduciary role and other responsibilities of the Board of Trustees as we are still the governing body of this college.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to trustees is we had every reason to be hopeful that we would gain clarity. Again, NETI had asked us to really work to ensure clarity of roles and responsibilities with our ACC consultant. And we're nearly there. Again, put together a comprehensive representative working group. That group right now is currently vetting the draft set of proposals and recommendations. Conversation was had with, as mentioned, Eduardo Martir, consultant, on a broad college-wide engagement for feedback and perspective. And again, I think, you know, having that wide-open conversation has been very, very helpful. I would anticipate that you, the board, then would be able to have a motion prepped where you would otherwise adopt and endorse. Again, for a formality that we know is necessarily important, given your purview as the policy body of the college at that June meeting. So again, in addition to strategic planning to truly formally adopt and endorse a governance model in June will be, I think, also pretty significant for this institution. And again, will carry us forward with a lot of help. So that's the bit I can add. Again, we're in good shape on a couple of very important aspects of the college operations.
Great. The update was incredible, Janay, when I put you on the spot. So much appreciated. Also, Maurice, thank you. Really hard work, really jumped in, really appreciate that. And I know there is still work to do, right? We've been talking about self-evaluations from the board, bylaws, committee statements, and missions. So there's a lot of great work still. And I think it goes hand in hands. And once we formalize our governance model, it gives us a great foundation. And thank you, Janay, for really mentioning the students, really the reason that we're there. So we'll be really excited to help launch that in the coming school year. So appreciate it. Any additional comments or questions? Hearing none. Our next board meeting is Monday, June 27th, 2022. So do I hear a motion to end today's meeting of the Board of Trustees for May 23rd?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Nanette, would you please take the role to end today's Board of Trustees meeting of Monday, May 23rd, 2022?
Mary Kate Muren?
Yes.
Janay McDonald?
Yes.
Elizabeth Pacito?
Yes.
Monique Seldom Riley?
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay?
Yes.
Sam Alid Hogan?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
Yes.
Noam Roldan?
Yes.
Jeff Satler?
Yes.
And Max Starks. Thank you.
Great. Everyone, please, please enjoy the long weekend. Be safe. Wear a hat, put some sun lotion on. And we will see. And don't forget to do your evaluation. But have a wonderful, wonderful weekend, everyone.